Good evening, West Orange.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome. It's December 20th, 2016, and it is the holiday season. So, on behalf of my colleagues in the township, we just want to wish you happy holidays and a wonderful and prosperous 2017. It's around the corner. It came here before we knew it. So, we want to wish you guys the best and enjoy your holidays with what's most important, which is family. Family is the single most important thing in life, so enjoy. Madam Clerk, we're going to get started?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger in the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We have some state champions. State champions, New Jersey state champions that we wish to present. And you know what's even better than state champions? What's even better? National champions. You get goosebumps thinking about that. You know, when I was in high school, I recall our baseball team, Memorial High School of West New York, we were like the national baseball champions, our team, and it's just something that people still talk about it to this day. So, we should be really, really, really proud of the accomplishments of the West Orange High School Marching Band. So, we're going to get started. Councilwoman McCartney is going to make a special presentation at this point. Should we introduce the band, or you want to go up there?
Let the director tell us what to do.
The reason why I ask is because I see a director over there, so I don't know if he wishes to direct.
Let me just explain why we're here. We'll explain why we're here, okay? We have been looking forward to doing this for a number of years, because they've been state champions a number of times.
National champions.
Well, now they're national champions. We've been asking to do this, and I think there should be special recognition, the fact that you were able to assemble this many children here, students, marching mountaineers to come, is a feat in itself. I can attest to that. So, they were undefeated, seven through seven competitions, at the New Jersey State Championships held at Rutgers University. The band was not only named the state champion, but also awarded Best Music, Best Effect, and Best Visual Caption Awards. At the national championships held in Allentown, Pennsylvania, the band was not only the national champion, but also awarded the Best Percussion, Best Music, Best Effect, and Best Visual Caption Award. And on that note...
Would you like to make a special strike up the band?
Yeah, I don't know, what do you do? I know this. It's the opposite of that.
Goosebumps.
Reminds me of my high school days.
Do you have other instructors here? I don't know. They're national. We got to get everybody in.
Yeah, well, this is pretty much it. Is everybody back in there, Mark? All right, we're good.
Yeah, this is a white shirt.
It works probably, not everybody. Most of the color guard members have rehearsal tonight, and a couple other commitments. Edison's concert. We're so happy to be here.
There you go.
Well, there we go. Hello? Is this on?
Yes, it's on.
All right. I'll use my band director voice anyway. I wanted to thank Town Council for having us. It's always a special honor for us to be here, although it's not the first time, as you know. So, the band really has a tradition of excellence, and we're thrilled to represent West Orange throughout the state. And throughout the nation, with the great things that happen, especially in our schools. Not only, you know, has this group done great things this year, our Wind Ensemble is going to be going to Indianapolis in March as part of a national festival with bands from Texas and Honolulu in California and Virginia. It's really been such, just a great year so far for all these students, and there's only, there's only more that's actually going to be great with our winter guard that's having a great start to the season, and our jazz bands having a great start to their year. We're just thrilled that the town would take the time out to recognize us at this busy time of the year, and thanks so much to our parents, our music boosters, who really, you know, are the backbone of a lot of, everything really, that the group does. So, I know that some of our executive board, along with Mr. Adelson, is here tonight. So, thank you to all the parents. On behalf of myself and Mrs. Legattic, we also want to thank the administration, Mr. Rutske, Mr. Quavliato, and especially our, probably, our biggest cheerleader at West Orange High School, Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you. Oh, we have...
Do you want to give the instructors?
Oh, we have one other item that's become a tradition for the band. The Board of Education has graciously paid for these. In the back reads, "West Orange High School Marching Mountaineers, Undefeated, U.S. Bands Group 5A, New Jersey State Champions, National Champions."
So, Lou and Erin are also so talented, they don't work alone. There are other instructors that help. Let's see.
I don't think I can read it. Where do I start?
Right, right there.
All right. Assistant Directors, Joshua Zimmer. Joshua Zimmer. Andrea Rommel. Percussion instructors, Michael Denver, Christopher Tarantino, Jeff Rubin. Color guard instructors, Sherry Kuzel, Kevin Schler, Allison Gibbons. Marching instructors, Chris Cubius, Matt Pooey. Kevin Monroe. Drill designer, Scott Tomlin. Administrators, and of course Superintendent Jeff Rutske, Principal Hayden Moore, Director of Visual and Performing Arts, Luke Ragliotta. So, wear your sweatshirts in good health, and we wish you all the best for the new year, and great, good luck.
Band members, you can come to Mrs. Legattic's truck and grab your hoodie. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you again to the West Orange High School Marching Band. We had goosebumps up here, watching them march through. Brings back memories of our high school days, as Karen just shared with me, or Madam Clerk. So, you have made us very, very proud. Thank you to all the sponsors, the boosters, the directors, instructors, and of course, the students for their tremendous achievement. Thank you again. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, nomination of Council President. Do I hear a nomination from the floor for Council President?
Yes, I'm going to nominate Councilman Kukoviac.
I'll second that.
Is a motion on the floor and a second? Madam Clerk?
Are we going to call for other, or are we just...
Start with that.
No, because you can't do the votes then. Do you have to, are there any other nominations on the floor for any other council members?
Any other nominations? No, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Councilman Kukoviac.
If I could, Council President, if I could.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I just want to say thank you to everyone up here who gave me consideration and supported this, and I want to thank everyone out in the audience, and also throughout the town who have supported me in this position for a while. And I pledge to run the meetings fairly, efficiently, and ultimately equally important, courteously, and I hope everyone will join me in that process as well. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, council liaisons for the 2017, 2016, no, it should be 2017 term, correct?
Yes, sorry about that.
Okay.
I can make a motion to.
The first item is Planning Board. Any nominations for Planning Board?
I'd like to nominate Susan McCartney.
Second?
For the fantastic job on the planning board.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you.
The next item is Local Assistance Board.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Michelle Castellino.
There's a nomination, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Dugnan House Board, Eagle Rock, Senior Citizen Housing Authority.
Victor, I know you serve there now, would you like to continue on the Dugnan House?
I would, thank you.
You're welcome. I nominate you to the Dugnan House.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations. John P. Rena House?
Yeah, I miss being there. I know you served there, but would you like to stay?
Yes, I'd like to.
I'll second that.
All right, Susan and Michelle.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman, thank you.
Thank you.
West Orange Municipal Alliance?
Downtown. No, Downtown West Orange Alliance is next, before the Municipal.
Yeah, because I saw J.G., threw me off. Okay. Downtown West Orange Alliance?
I'll nominate Councilman Guarino. I assume you'd like to keep that one?
Absolutely, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is carried.
Can I vote now? I've been asking for that position since John Scarp尼克.
Now, the West Orange Municipal Alliance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. West Orange Municipal Alliance Committee, nominations?
Michelle, do you want to stick?
Yeah.
Nominate Michelle?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
West Orange Arts Council?
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Susan McCartney.
Thank you.
Second there?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Open Space and Recreation Committee, Councilman Kukoviac, would you like to remain?
I'd like to continue.
Second.
Nominate Councilman Kukoviac?
I'll nominate him.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public Relations Commission?
I'll nominate Michelle. Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Joint Meeting Commission?
I'd like to go back to that.
Would you like to remain?
Yes.
Are you in your second year?
No, this is the first, it's just starting.
Oh, okay. I'll nominate you for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Insurance Fund Commission?
I'll nominate two members.
I'd like to stay.
It's a good...
Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Council President Victor Cirillo and myself.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, and best of luck as we continue doing the people's work. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
We're going to move on to update redevelopment. Mr. Sayers?
Thank you, Council President. Again, they're moving along. They've had, done the top apartment of the building. If you're going by there, you can see they're finishing up the apartments on the top of the building. They're putting plumbing, electrical work inside the building. That's going pretty well. They had public service out there the other day, hooking up some additional stuff. They had, the water people were out there today, hooking up water, they're hooking all the water and electricity into buildings. The garage is almost completed. The beginning of the R over R is being done right now. There are permits that they will be probably getting by the end of the week. They met with the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission has basically signed off on what they're doing, as long as the facade is changed, which I got the call today from Mr. Feeney, and I spoke with him for about a half an hour. So, that's going to be moving, R over R is going to start moving pretty quickly now, and that's about it. That's where we're at.
Yes, Mr. Sayers, and we also spoke about, some of the members of the Town Council just wanted some additional briefing on the issues with the foreclosure matter?
Absolutely. We have council here this evening, who will be ready to talk about it.
Okay, now would be, this would be the time, if it's okay, if they're ready.
Well, there's certain things we can talk about, and certain things we can't talk.
Oh, I see.
We can give you a, go ahead, you want to take over?
Look, in general, as is always the case, when we're talking about facts and general legal concepts, that's done in an open public meeting. And Ms. Credidio is here, our redevelopment council, to talk about those things in the public meeting. Once we start talking about anything else involving choices, strategic considerations, that's got to be in an executive session in order to protect the attorney-client privilege with respect to potential litigation, future contract negotiations, and so forth. So, as long as we understand that we have that line, I did ask the clerk, and she did prepare a resolution, so that depending on what you folks want to do, we can go into executive session.
Okay.
I have one last thing also.
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac had asked for a timeline on construction. Fortunately, I just got it. I just pulled it off my computer, so I'm going to distribute a copy to everybody, and you can take a look at.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sayers. So, do we...
And I, Council President, I think with respect to that, if there are general questions about it, I think that Ms. Credidio can answer them as well.
Absolutely. Should we go into executive session so we know what can be discussed publicly, and what can't?
Yeah.
It's probably in our best interest to go into executive session first?
And then she could inform the public on what can be said.
She can guide us on what's, you know, pertinent, or facts, general matters, et cetera. Okay, so then, what we'll do, Ms. Kizer, we'll go into entertain a resolution to go into executive session. So, I will entertain a motion.
I worked all day, I didn't check my computer.
You're correct.
It's right here. It's coming around.
So, perhaps we can postpone the discussion, because we have to start our regular meeting in order to be able to consider the executive session resolution. You have a comment?
You're almost done with the public, with the conference meeting anyway, so I think...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, we'll go into council liaison announcements at this point?
Sure.
Yes, Councilman?
If I could just follow up, because Mr. Sayers stole my thunder, because I was at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting last week, and everything that he said is what happened last week. And the only issue I had, or question, is our impression, I think, when we left the meeting, was that, obviously, the footings for the retail, I'm sorry, residential, retail have been poured, and I think are continuing to be poured, but I thought that the actual construction of the building was not constructed in March or so. Is that your understanding too, or...
I know they applied for the permit for the building, and Tom is ready to issue the permit, but we were holding the permit back, to be quite honest with you, based on the Historic Preservation Commission decision. So, when I spoke to Mr. Feeney today, he said they had no problem with us issuing the permit. So, they have not requested it yet, but when they do request it, we'll have the permit ready to go.
Yeah, there were a few outstanding items. Much of the changes have been made and agreed to. There were a few items, basically, just looking at some...
Headed with the facade.
Yeah, with, looking at specific materials that are going to be put on the building.
Correct.
And that might be something that's going to take Prism a few to several weeks to obtain. And what the, my understanding is pretty much what you heard, is that the commission did not have any injection to Prism moving yet.
The permit being issued to do the destruction, yeah.
Okay. So, they were saying, maybe the construction of the actual building started in March, you think it might happen soon?
I mean, like I said, the permit's ready. Whenever they're ready to come down and get it, we'll probably issue it.
Councilman, would you like to lead us on the council liaison announcements?
Sure, I just, very briefly, in addition to that, also at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, was another presentation from the new architect that's been hired by the congregation at St. Mark's Church on Main Street to design the restoration of that historic building, which was severely damaged in a fire New Year's Day. They wanted to brief the commission on the plans to begin the process of getting all of the approvals that they will need, which is going to take several months. They are in the process, construction-wise, of sealing the top of all of the exposed walls over there, the shoring up of the building, which needed to be done, because most of the roof was burned off in the fire. The shoring has occurred. We're going to lay a wooden course all along, at the top of all of the walls, and then seal that. It will help anchor the roof that goes in, it will help stabilize the building, and it will prevent water from leaking down into, moisture into the walls, which is the real danger of the building, because some of the walls date back to 1820, the eight twenties. So, the presentation, I am confident to say, left the commission really excited at the progress that had been made, and the prospect of restoring this landmark, which, as I mentioned, was originally built in the 1820s, and the steeple and bell tower was added in 1861 by one of the country's most famous architects, Richard Upchuck. So, I would like to get them here, the congregation leaders and the architect, to a council meeting next year, early next year, so that we can demonstrate this, because it's just phenomenal what they want to do, and very exciting.
It's good news.
That's all I, that's all I.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else for council liaison announcements?
Sure.
So, we had a West Orange Arts Council meeting on last Thursday. The West Orange Arts Council would like to come to our, one of our January meetings to thank the former Chair, Carolyn Black, and to recognize the new Chair, Patricia Matrono, and to talk about all the new programming that they have coming up, drawing and painting Wednesday afternoons. There are a lot of dates. I would, I guess I should just say, to go to W O Arts dot org to see the list of weekend art projects, Exploring Watercolor with Gail Mahoney, Business Bootcamp for Artists, teaching opportunities, and rental of their gallery space. They had a successful holiday boutique also through the month of December. And there is also the West Orange Film Festival, which will begin in January. This is every Sunday from January 15th through March 5th. As a West Orange Arts Council member, you receive 20% discount on the tickets at the AMC Theater in the Essex Green Plaza. Some of their choices next year will be The Movie Network, The Manchurian Candidate, Hold That Ghost, Gilda, High Noon, and Ran, and a special feature on Alfred Hitchcock's The Lady Vanishes. Interesting things coming up. And Council President, as you know, on our agenda this evening, we have an ordinance on first reading, which is adopting a redevelopment plan for an area in need of redevelopment. This was unanimously approved by the Planning Board. And just, I can read the block and lot numbers, the areas on Central Avenue, 25 Mitchell Street, 29 Mitchell Street, 27 Mitchell Street, 8 to 10 Central Avenue, 18 Central Avenue, and 4 Tompkins Street. So, we have that on our agenda for first reading.
You can read more about it in the West Orange...
There you go. Thanks to the Chronicle. You can read all about it.
Thank you. Thank you. My next?
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Yes, Council?
Thank you, Council President. Just like everybody knows, tomorrow here in Town Hall will be the annual meeting for the West Orange Downtown Alliance. All the public is invited to attend to voice your opinions, hear our master plan for going forward in the next few years. So, we invite the community to come out and voice your opinions, and talk to members and owners of the downtown Main Street corridor. Also, another point of view is, remember, folks, right now Glenmont, part of the West Orange, you know, the National Historic Park, Glenmont, the home of Thomas Edison, is decked out for Christmas. And I suggest you get to go there and see it, because once Christmas is over, Glenmont will be closed, going for the normal winter close, but for three to five months for historic restoration. The interior and the roof for Glenmont is being done, paid for by the National Park Service. So, if you'd really like to see how the Edisons celebrate a Christmas, this is the time to go see Glenmont, and it's Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays it's open, so tickets go fast. So, you should get to. Tickets can be purchased at the Laboratories down on Main Street, and it gives you permit to get into the Welland Park, but it's a great experience to see Glenmont as the Edisons celebrate a Christmas. But like I said, the house will be closed between three to five months for extensive interior renovations and the roof being replaced. So, it's really a great thing, you should get to see it. A lot of people live in West Orange for years and didn't even know it was there. So, we invite everybody to come. Also, people should think about joining the Friends of the Thomas Edison National Park. You can find our website online, W W W F O T E N. And you should come and join us and get involved, what we're trying to do to support the... do to support the Laboratories. I mean, federal funding is limited, but we raise as an organization. Councilwoman McCartney and I are board members. The fundraisers that we do, the events that we do, it's something that we're very proud of in West Orange, is the Thomas Edison National Park. It's one of our greatest gifts. It's also a benefit to the Main Street corridor. So, I do ask you to get involved. The one project that we've met our goal with in a matching grant from the federal government is the machine shop line display, which for the last 10 years has, about 10 years, Councilwoman, hasn't been used, but we were able to raise the money on our own, plus get a matching grant from the federal government to redo the machine shop. So, people can come in and actually see the actual machinery running again, as Thomas Edison and his muckers had done. So, come on, come and join us. Y'all have a, y'all have a great time. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes. I want to start off by thanking Lisa Adams and all the volunteers that put together the Christmas, the holiday party for the Mayor's Disabled Program this past Sunday. It was a lovely event. They worked really hard. And many, many folks of that organization really enjoyed and had a good time. There was a lot of dancing, so they had a great time.
And singing.
Also, too, I want to just congratulate the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. You did a really nice job on your Christmas party and for all that you did for the children of West Orange. So, ni- nice job. I won't take your thunder. I'm sure you're going to speak to that. And we had our PR Commission meeting about a week or so ago, and we got together. We discussed the busy week that Ms. Burrell had in, first week of December, and making suggestions and ideas and brainstorming already for next year. So, it was a great productive meeting. And Mr. Lepore, I see you in the back. Not to put you on the spot, but just trying to get a date of when the facade will be done for the library. You have any idea?
They are moving.
I know they're moving, yeah.
Not sure when they're, when they're going to be completed, but they're, they're moving pretty well. They've been working in the cold the last couple of days, so.
Yeah, even the rain. I got to give them kudos. They had the tarp over and-
They're working.
They're working underneath the rain. So, that's going to be exciting when that is all completed. And again, I just want to say congratulations to the band again. Being a former school board member, we always say that the band works so hard, not only of all their musical accomplishments, but their, their academic accomplishments as well, the hours those students put in on the weekends alone. Like you, they're there every weekend and late nights, and they, they never complain. And they're great, really, really hardworking students. So, congratulations to all and to the Booster Club on a, and the directors on a nice recognition. Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just want to thank everyone for your benevolence through the, through this holiday season. There's toy drives, soup kitchens, a lot of events going on. Ron Charles, a Board of Education member, has a toy drive for children at St. Jude's Hospital. We have, as you mentioned, Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez here, a great toy drive and holiday party at Holy Trinity Church. We have the Mayor's Sunshine Fund. I just want to make sure that we recognize all those folks that put in a lot of time, effort, and whether it be financial or, you know, just volunteer work, just to put smiles on people's faces and allow others to enjoy the holidays, the same way that we're blessed to enjoy the holidays as well. So, thank you. Thank you all. Residents, you may donate your time or help out other endeavors of your choosing. We're making a better world. And thank you. Thank you all for that benevolence. Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to our public meeting at this point.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cyrilau?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to get started. We're going to have a quick executive session to talk about an issue of, a matter of redevelopment that just came up. We promise we won't take too long. We'll be right back. I'm going to ask for a, a resolution, I guess?
There is a resolution on the agenda tonight, 289 dash 16, for this purpose.
Okay, so, with, motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
We'll be right back. We'll take a, a quick break. We're back from executive session. Thank you very much for your patience. We are going to conclude our discussion that started during our conference meeting agenda, and that is a discussion on redevelopment, some matters that have come up on, with respect to real estate transactions on Main, Main Street. And to conclude that discussion, I'm going to ask now our representatives of McManaman in Scotland to come up to the podium just to give some final remarks, just to update the public on some of the redevelopment matters that, that are going on at this point.
Two microphones, really?
One on the right.
One on your right.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. My name is Jennifer Credidio. I'm a partner with the firm of McManaman Scotland and Baumann located in Roseland. We are privileged to serve as Special Redevelopment Counsel to the Township. So, to briefly recap the, the discussion that we started before, the, the core of the conversation relates to 217 Main Street, which you would know as the CVS property. 217 Main Street was acquired by the creatively named 217 Main LLC, which is a, a limited liability company that is organized and overseen by Prism Green Associates. The property was required to be purchased by your 2006 redevelopment agreement for the larger redevelopment area in downtown, which was acquired by 217 Main in accordance with the agreement in 2007 for a purchase price of $7 million. For your reference, the property is currently assessed at about $4.2 million. It is our understanding from representations from the developer that at the time of acquisition, they also assumed a mortgage that was previously existing on the property. And that mortgage was the subject of a foreclosure proceeding, which culminated in a sheriff's sale on December 13th. There were no bidders at the sale. The bank formed an LLC, which is, you know, a common function for real estate holding. And that LLC put in what's known as a credit bid of $100, and they were awarded the property. The last step in the foreclosure process is the issuance of a sheriff's deed, which can be recorded to transfer the title to the winning bidder at auction. It's my understanding, it usually takes about 10 days for that to occur. To the best of my knowledge, that hasn't occurred yet, but there's no reason to expect that it will not happen in the normal course. Where this property fits into your redevelopment agreement and your general downtown redevelopment, it does not have any interaction with the undertaking at the Edison Battery Factory proper. That is the subject of a completely separate redevelopment agreement with a separate legal entity that was executed and authorized in February of this year. With respect to your larger downtown redevelopment, again, there was a requirement for the, for the developer to acquire the property, in part to demonstrate their financial commitment and involvement in the downtown at the inception of the redevelopment process in 2006, which they did in accordance with the agreement. So far as we understand, there's no part of the residential development that was anticipated for that site. In fact, the redevelopment plan zones that site as commercial. It was always our understanding that it would continue to be used for some sort of commercial use that would support the adjacent residential, whether it continued as a CVS or some other food store or convenience, you know, lifestyle related use. To the extent that the property continues to be used as a CVS or a, or a related type of use, you know, the property owner is certainly entitled to do that, as with any property owner in the municipality. Changes in zoning only really kick in at, you know, certain criteria, including the abandonment of a previously authorized use or the expansion of a, previously authorized use or structure. To the extent that a new project, you know, i.e. not the continuation of CVS or something similar there too, was to occur at the site, the property owner, whether it be the bank, Prism, or, you know, any other party, would be subject to the redevelopment plan and would need to, you know, come back to this body to explore permission to redevelop the site.
Terrific. Any questions?
No, Jen, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. There's nothing that the town or the council has to do at this point?
That's correct. That's correct, Council.
Thank you. Jennifer, thank you again for the great presentation.
Take my drink.
Going to move on to public comment? Any member of the public wish to address? Yes, sir?
Representative Jack?
Absolutely, will do. But I already committed to the gentleman. Come up, sir. Yes, yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President and the council members. My name is Harvey Montague. I live at 29 Boland Drive. I'm here to ask a question, maybe give a little history, which you probably know, but ask a question about the status of a public bid auction for a property at 55 dash 57 Ridgeway. That's a property that has been designated to be two single-family homes, the original Schwendler Estate and the Tarriage House adjacent to it. My involvement has been for past at least three and a half years. I took an interest as an architect and urban designer in the condition of that property. I'm interested in historic preservation. I've met with the Historic Commission about the property. Also, personal matter, my son and my daughter-in-law and three grandchildren live in the St. Cloud neighborhood. So, they're saying, "Hey, Dad, hey, Grandpa, what's happening up on Ridgeway?" So, I'm, the history has been, it's been out for auction, as you know. There have been two or three cycles. There was a second look on the bids. There were two, two bids that were the same. And I'm just curious, for two reasons. One is, some people have asked me for help in doing some of the work. But besides that, the building is getting older. It's been vacant for 10 years, even though it has a new roof and, or relatively new roof. And the town's been doing a good job of maintaining the property around the grounds and so on. These buildings age. When you get to swings of from 90 degrees to 20 degrees, things crack and break. It needs a major renovation inside all the utilities, heating, cooling, you know, electrical. There's stucco on the exterior that's cracking and falling off. The interior has some beautiful woodwork, stained glass windows, beautiful fireplaces, fantastic floors. And I don't know, I know, I haven't, I've been in the building about five times, most recently about two months ago. And it's hard for me to say what's happening behind the walls, whether, you know, things are getting worse or stabilized. I don't think they're stabilized. There's also some issues with hazards, materials, minor asbestos, definitely a lot of mold, insects, vermin getting in and leaving their acorns around. So, my interest is to see how we can move this along and get some idea of when. We were told, I'd say we, I understood from talking to people who put in a proposal, I did not put in a proposal. I was told that they expect to hear by the end of December. So, my question is, can you tell me what is transpiring and when we can expect to, because this is an additional process. There's a two-month period of closing. There's existing condition drawings that have to be drawn. There are permits that have to be obtained. So, we're still six months away from doing any repair work. So, just like to know if anyone can tell me, if you can tell me what to expect.
Okay, will you answer that question, Mr. Montague?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's time. You come up, you make your comments. Everyone comes up, makes their comments, and the council will address at the end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montague. Madam Clerk, according to this resolution, two-thirds of, two-thirds of drug-related deaths are due to prescription drug abuse. And today we have a resolution before the council, which would allow us to accept a drop box to be placed at our police station for the purposes of allowing members of the public to wish to drop off their unused prescriptions or any expired medications that they may have. So, at this point, I'm going to ask, I see Jessica coming up, Jessica Bufflin, and Lieutenant Michael Callie's here to talk a little bit about this initiative. Yes, Lieutenant? As well as, we have Julia Riveretto?
Yes. And we also have somebody from, a student from Seton Hall Law School.
Terrific. Just enlighten us a little bit on what you're doing to address this menace.
Exactly. Good evening, everyone. Jessica Bufflin from the Township Attorney's Office. I'm here today regarding a resolution, like you said, for a medicine drop box. And basically, how this all started was, as the council's aware, about a month and a half ago, we launched Operation Hope, which deals directly with combating the heroin and opiate epidemic in our community, in our state, in our nation. And this drop box is consistent with the township's commitment to dealing with the growing concern for misuse of prescription drugs. So, basically, what happened, before we introduce you to Zachary Taylor, who's a second-year law student at Seton Hall, and he'll tell you more about the program, you know, myself and my colleague, Richard Trank, have, everywhere we go, we talk about Operation Hope. And we're trying to get the word out. And of course, one of the first things you think about is law students and their interests. And we found out that Seton Hall had a program through a professor that deals directly with prescription drug overdoses and misuse. So, we met with Zachary Taylor a few weeks later, came to our office, and he said, you know, this, as the students were committed to helping with Operation Hope, "But let me tell you about a new program, a program that is at no cost to the township and that is, exists in eight other towns in Essex County." So, I'll just introduce Zach. He can tell you about the program. And then we have Officer Callie here that can address any concerns that the council has regarding implementation and destruction of the drugs and so forth. So, thank you.
Zach, thank you for being here, for your work on behalf of Adapt.
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Thank you guys so much for having me here. As Jessica said, I'm a second-year law student. In my day career, I also worked for St. Peter's and Robwood Johnson University Hospitals, doing community health work for them. This project started with the Leadership Fellows Program at Seton Hall Law, where a group of law students that were selected through an application process to represent the law school community outside and in every asset that we touch. My particular team had a particular interest in addiction. Lawyers and law students, if you may not know, have an addiction rate about twice as high as the average population. It was something we felt really adamant about. We began exploring different avenues and ways we could address this epidemic. And we realized that not only should we target our law students, we should target the community that we come from. And we began exploring different avenues. And Project Medicine Drop, which was started by the New Jersey Division of Consumer Affairs, is a, was a way for community members to have access 365 days a year, 24 hours, to drop off unwanted, unused prescription or over-the-counter medication. And what you find with abusive opioids in particular is they come from the home. They come from your grandparents' house. They come from neighbors. They come from open houses and people shopping for looking at homes. And one way we can help curb this epidemic is to remove drugs from the home and put them in a safe location to be disposed of properly. And the best place to do it is the police department. And as Jessica indicated, when we met with Trank Law Firm, we heard about Project Hope. We were really excited. The synergy between these two projects, testament to what West Orange stands for. This synergy between these two projects, testament to what West Orange stands for in helping curb this epidemic across the state. And you guys had the chance to really be a trendsetter across the state and even the country, having these two programs run in conjunction. And we're just really appreciative that you guys would consider this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. And it's really your efforts, you know, and Trank's law firm that has been so proactive. So thank you for doing that on behalf of all of us. Lieutenant Callie?
Yes. Lieutenant Callie, West Orange Police Department. I think they covered the reason why we should have this medical drop box. I'm just going to concern, if you have any concerns about it, it's going to be in the police lobby. We're going to have a specific box that's going to be where you can put something in it, but you can't take it out. Okay? It's almost like the mailbox where, you know, a ledge or something comes up where somebody's going to stick in their hand and take it out. It'd be viewed by a camera at all times in the lobby. It's also during the day, going to be direct view by our Record Bureau, which is going to be right outside the, in the hallway. So people would have access to this box 24/7, because it is in the police library. We do have access to allow people to come in 24/7. And this is a program that is growing. Many of the towns surrounding us already adopted this program. It's Orange, East Orange, Bloomfield, Livingston, I mean, they all have already been involved in this program. I don't know what kind of concerns that you would have, but it is something I believe that this township could get behind and really be proud of.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just quickly, I just want to acknowledge Julia Riverero, who's here from Adapt, which is Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Team. It's because of them and their grant they were able to get from the New Jersey Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services that this is at no cost to the township. So that's obviously always a benefit to the municipality. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for considering us. Thank you, everybody. Any questions from our council members?
Mr. President, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say how much, well, the police department, I want to commend anyway, because they have been doing this program in April and October for a number of years now. I want to say recycling the drugs or at least returning them back, the give-back. And that was part of the Sustainable Jersey Recertification Application that we just submitted back in September. The township did receive points for doing that. So this is far better to have it on an ongoing basis, that you're not actually even accumulating the drugs, you know, you just get rid of them when they, when you need to. We need to do a good job on promoting that. I'm glad to see PR people are here tonight to get the word out, to let people know that, you know, the program is there.
Thank you all.
Great job.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, guys. Thanks for your work. Yes, Claire?
Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just wanted to give a huge thank you to the West Orange community for their response to the Girl Scouts efforts on Jersey Cares Co-Drive this year. In total, we collected 365 coats, which is far in excess of any of the totals in previous years. And I think that's a lot of thanks to, as I mentioned, Shawna Roth, our West Orange Service Unit Coordinator, was able to get bin collection sites all over town, which I think made it a lot easier for residents to donate. And the girls and leaders at Redwood and Mount Pleasant Schools did a lot of the work in sorting and delivering the coats to Jersey Cares. So I also want to thank the West, Perry Bashkov did a nice plug for the Co-Drive on the Facebook page. And so there was a lot more public relations out there, information, and I think it really showed. So just wanted to say thank you again to all the residents who participated. Also, I wanted to acknowledge that I made an error last time when I spoke about how many coats we collected last year. We actually collected nearly 200 coats, but this is far in excess of that. So, thank you very much. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Yes.
Tammy Williams, 16 Hillside Avenue. On behalf of the West Orange Human Relations Commission, we would like to inform the public that we'll be holding the annual Township Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on January 16th, 2017, at the Life Christian Church, located at 747 Northville Avenue at 10 a.m. This year, the HRC has selected five nominees to receive the MLK Spirit Award. The Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday celebrates the life and legacy of a man who brought hope and healing to America. We commemorate as well the timeless ideals he embodied and lived, the values of courage, truth, justice, compassion, dignity, humility, and service. These principles radiantly define Dr. King's character and empowered his leadership. On this holiday, we will commemorate the universal unconditional love, forgiveness, and nonviolence that characterized his revolutionary spirit, as quoted by Coretta Scott King. The committee requested nominations for citizens of West Orange who are deserving, based on their volunteer efforts in the community or beyond, who are bona fide residents to receive the 2017 award. Nine nominations were received, and the committee selected five recipients for the 2017 award. The awardees are Mona Scott Young of Mona Me Entertainment, Jane Gartner, former Chair of the Human Relations Commission, Marley Diaz, student who created 1,000 Black Girl Books Initiative, and Henry Hamilton, Principal of Whitney Houston Academy, and from the Township Employee Municipality, Rudolpho Rodriguez, our Deputy Mayor. The ceremony will feature students from the township performing the award's presentation, keynote speaker Ashley Boy McFarland of Bravo Entertainment, and reflections from invited township officials and dignitaries. We hope that attendance is overwhelming. All ages are invited to attend. This is a free event. We have invited all township organizations and departments, residents, and families to attend. We hope that the flyer is distributed through the Board of Education and the township media outlets, and we're looking forward to an outstanding event. The HRC will also partner in 2017 with the West Orange Public Library to foster a monthly film series on implicit bias. The schedule is forthcoming in the new year. The HRC wishes everyone a peaceful and prosperous new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tam. That's the 16th, 10 a.m. MLK Day Celebration at Life Christian Church, January 16th. Next speaker? Yes, Ross?
Hi, Ross Moskiewski, Leavenwood Drive. I do want to say Happy Holidays, wishing you all the best. I want to thank you for your service, your continued service to West Orange. And thank you for participating, for those that participated at the Pleasant Valley Way Civic Association debate that we had on October 19th. That was really great. So, thank you. I know that Pleasant Valley Way has a grant for a streetscape, a $700,000 grant. I hope we get that grant, because, to tell you the truth, just today, I was at Baumann's, and I wanted to go to the post office, and I nearly got hit by a car crossing Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock, you know, right at Eagle Rock Avenue. And then I almost tripped on ice that was, that was not cloud. You know, I'm going to pass some pictures, because their pictures are always worth a thousand words. And, you know, we can do, even before we get this grant, before we can do anything, we could probably do something to fix the asphalt near Luke Oil. I mean, they're a multi-billion dollar corporation. I'm sure that if we implored them to come out, they would help clean up that sidewalk. And we need to make inroads with the bus stop there. There are a lot of people that pick up the 71 bus there. I do want to ask the township or the West Orange Downtown Alliance about if they have made inquiries to the county to increase the pedestrian crossings for senior citizens. Because, you know, this, as we know, here's, I'm sure, at Charles Brown, due for us at Rutgers University, we have those three major crashes out of Main Street, Eagle Rock Avenue, Mount Pleasant Avenue, and Dilma Con Drive. What, has anything changed there since May? I mean, these are, that's, I think, a relatively good question to ask. What have we changed to make this area safer? And what are we going to do about, again, the intersection at Eagle Rock and Pleasant Valley Way is deadly. People don't want to go to the stores, they don't want to go to CVS. I should be able to walk one-tenth of a mile from Baumann's to the post office. It's just, you just can't do it. You can't do it. I do want to bring attention to the fatality of November 17th, Dr. Bergman. That's, again, I know it's a state road, but that intersection, I worked at Liberty Middle, Liberty Middle School, the buses are flying, parents are flying in there. I think the speed limit's 45. Maybe we can get it reduced. Just, you know, I don't know what the details of that accident were. I haven't read the police report. But again, it's an area that we can, the state is actually very cooperative. We got the lights turned on on 280 at exit A and B. They were off for months. Prospect was pitch black. We got, like, called the governor's office, police department, we actually got them turned on. So we can be pro-life, we can get these changes made. I do want, the pedestrian safety advisory board, Councilwoman Guarino, is that January 12th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a pedestrian safety advisory board meeting on January 12th, and at the Zoo Educational Center. Hope everybody can come out. Thank you, and Happy Holidays again.
Oh, the meeting's on at 7:30.
7:30, it's a Thursday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ross. Do you have pictures? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council? See you now, Madam Clerk?
Please don't.
Oh, yes.
Chair of U26 Walker Road. In this holiday season, I'd like to quote from everyone's favorite holiday classic movie, It's a Wonderful Life. And the quote is, "Strange, isn't it? Each man's life touches so many other lives. Clarence, an angel in training, gives a despondent man, George Bailey, a look at what the world would look like if he had not been born. In one scene, George is on Main Street of Bedford Falls. It is not the idyllic place he has built as the reluctant successor and leader of the local building and loan. Instead, it's a rundown, dirty, violent place called Potterville. Seems that old man Potter, president of the bank, causes this to happen because George Bailey was not there to guide the town in a better direction." This was Jimmy Stewart's favorite role as an actor, and maybe it was because his first role was that he was an architect. He graduated Princeton University School of Architecture before going to Hollywood. In the next few minutes, please put the picture of Bedford Falls versus Potterville in your minds. Picture our downtown and compare it to the adjacent nearby downtowns. I've been trying to help improve our downtown corridor for decades, even before there was a Downtown Alliance. Businesses in our downtown collectively pay over $100,000 a year in assessment fees that are supposed to help make our downtown a better place. But do they? For those who do not know me, and I know you all do, but for those who don't, my experience includes leading 2,000 architects as president of the AIA in New Jersey, and three years as a director on the National Board of the American Institute of Architects in Washington, DC. I'm a four-decade township volunteer, having shared my professional experience and experience with the Board of Education, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and currently on the Planning Board and the Downtown Alliance. I speak this evening with a heavy heart. Despite being the only design professional on the Downtown Alliance Board, I've been given notice that I'm to be removed, and I believe that this is illegal. Chairman John McElroy has initiated this simply for, because I stand up for my beliefs, speaking my mind, for declining the mayor's previous written request to resign. Executive Director Megan Brill has indicated that the plan to do this is at the closed meeting, and I asked the board members, and asked the board members not to discuss any of this until that meeting. On several occasions, all of you have applauded my efforts for our community. I'm here this evening to inform you of what's going to happen at tomorrow's Downtown Alliance. I welcome your response, especially yours, Councilwoman Guarino, as the council's liaison to the alliance. I also would like our residents to learn how one of their volunteer neighbors is being treated after dedicating so much time. For years, I frequently advocated for the enforcement of our zoning and property maintenance regulations. If this was done, a wholesale and immediate positive change in the downtown corridor would be provided. That would be something that the alliance could build on. Enforcement has languished for too long, and so has this area, which should be a vital and important part of our community. Architects have always known how to create places like workable downtowns. My unique training and creative approach to design challenges work to complement and enhance many facets of our community. As an architect and as a planner, I believe in the livability factor of a downtown corridor. However, the alliance focuses heavily on the one-off events, people who come to the area for the event and then leave. We need to focus on the downtown becoming a more significant part of the people's everyday lives, shopping, jobs, supporting existing historic attractions, residents spending more time in an attractive and engaging environment of structures and spaces. We need to make it easier for them to know what's available. We need to capture their attention, their imagination, their pocketbooks. We need a hard look, particularly through the eyes of professionals, who would be able to identify the needs of pedestrians, traffic, parking requirements, and above all, identify what needs improvement and help to create a vision of a long-term plan. There is none of that now from the Downtown Alliance or the municipal government. I supported a late colleague's idea of a circulatory traffic plan in the downtown that would be similar to what has worked wonderfully in Melbourne for over 50 years now. Melbourne has embarked on an aggressive Safe Streets program that will further enhance its validity as a walkable downtown center. We could do the same. Design excellence is the foundation of a livable community. An attractive locality would draw more residents, visitors alike, to our downtown corridor. It would bring increased commerce, fill the many vacancies, and provide a tax revenue for West Orange. Our mission should be focusing on bringing us back from the brink, not ignoring the obvious existing degradation of a once proud historic area. My removal, it's very hard for me, my removal is really indeed similar to George Bailey's plight of not being born. This is how Bedford Farms, Bedford Falls would fall and become Potterville. I ask you, council members, do you want the same for West Orange? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Tonight, I have a few, start it with a couple, but I have a few things I want to talk about. First of all, you did a noble and long-due job by electing Joe Krikoliak as president of this council. Time was, it was time. I want to comment on the ban. Kids are terrific. We should be really proud of them. But parenting is important. Imagine all these parents forcing these kids to practice. That's what got them where they are. I really am disturbed by Jerry's announcement. I think he's been a valuable asset to the community. At the last council meeting, I spoke about the problems seniors were encountering in attempting to schedule transportation with the county. I called it an unwieldy process. Mr. Pagliisi, who isn't here tonight, said he wasn't aware that there were any problems, but he would check it to make sure. When Ms. McCartney and Mr. Sayers responded, they claimed they had not received any complaints and did not indicate that they were and did not indicate that they would follow up. Mr. Pagliisi did follow up, and he responded via email that he spoke with the director of senior services who confirmed there is a problem, and they, the county, are in the process of rectifying it. It's a whole involved process, but there is a problem. They are, in my dealings with the county, the most professional people I have dealt with in any type of government at any level. And I think it has a lot to do with the county exec, but they are professional people. Now, any successful businessperson knows that best practices are to be proactive and prevent complaints, not wait to take action after the fact. You're running a business, and the citizens of this township are your clients. Coincidentally, tonight on TV, there's some political discussion, and they talked about the government being proactive. And the analogy that this man made was, we should be arsonists, not firemen. I hope you get that. Additionally, I take offense at their comments, McCartney and Sayers. It's my opinion that they insinuated I wasn't telling the truth. Therefore, they impugned my integrity. And for the record, my character and my integrity are my two most valuable assets. I will not allow anyone to make me a victim. I believe victims allow themselves to be victims, and you're not looking at a victim here tonight. Comment on the Ridgeway property. Why can't we make that a community center, one big whole, intergenerational, like the one they have in Livingston? Mr. Cirillo, you talk about respect. It works both ways. Apologies are used to apologize for indiscretions, and they're a way of showing respect. You support the drug box. I'm involved with Operation Hope. I think that's a great idea. As far as Roz is concerned, she's doing an outstanding job, and some of the carnage on the road has recently involved seniors, and that's a frightening experience, or it's a frightening record for the town. Something needs to be done. And I think I've covered everything. Thank you. I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Any other member of the public wish to address the council at this time? See none, Madam Clerk?
We're going to review the, oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor responsive.
Just want to keep the agenda moving. Who would like to start?
Welcome, Mr. Sayers.
I can start.
Sure. Well, let's start with, the first question was from Harvey Montague about Ridgeway property. Can you tell us where we are, why I haven't heard anything about the bids?
Yes, we have, we've gotten three bids on the Ridgway property. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We've gotten three bids on the Ridgway property. One of the bidders has sent a letter requesting some information about the other two bidders and why they should qualify or not qualify. So unfortunately, right now, this is in our legal department to figure out what direction we need to go in. After we got that letter, what happened was there were two bidders who bid the same amount of money. So there was a letter sent out to those two bidders to say, you both bid the same amount, please submit another bid. Both companies did submit another bid. One of the companies had some issues that they wanted the town to deal with with their bid, which was not part of the actual bid process. So all I can tell you is, it's in the legal department right now, and they're going over exactly where we're going to go. One of the discussions we had as early as yesterday was possibly extending the bid until we decide how we're going to deal with the three bidders. That's the best I can tell you. Right now.
Can I ask how much the bids were?
Absolutely.
How much were the bids for?
Originally, no. Yeah, I don't think we should, yeah, you're probably right. I don't think we can do that.
One of the water.
Yeah, but they were resubmitted.
Can I, can I, can I ask what conditions that one of the bidders was asking for, that the township would be required?
I don't know.
Hang on one second.
Sure. I'm an accountant, I didn't go to law school. Then it's public, then it should be.
In my opinion, it's one thing if you're talking about a segment of it, one particular portion of what was responded, as opposed to looking at the entire document. Because the entire document is what they proposed, and they really can't, or maybe that's important not to, in my opinion, you know, that, look at the total picture, not on the pieces, because you may prejudice the process by functioning publicly.
Okay. Okay. Yes, sir.
Couple things. First of all, I'm not the part of the legal department that's dealing with this issue, so I have, you know, Jack's just sort of tried to fill me in, and quite frankly, the safest thing to do is not to talk about it now, based on everything that he's told me and the little bits of the letters that I've seen. And there's really nothing to be gained by talking about it, maybe there's something to lose by talking about it, so. We're trying to deal with those properties, obviously.
I just wanted to give an idea of what, you know, whatever, so.
The problem is that the dollar amounts by themselves don't really mean a lot, because there's other factors that are in.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
But Harvey, I do appreciate the comments that you made, because we have been in that building when Open Space was looking to purchase that property, or the Ridgway property. The Arts Council has also looked at the Carriage House because it serves nicely, it could serve nicely as a studio for an art colony, so I appreciate the fact that you talked about it in architectural terms and historic preservation of it. But, you know, we don't know where we're going from here. I already made my comments about the Operation Hope and the Drug Give Back Program, Police Department, and Legal Department to be commended on that, and now bringing in Seton Hall Law is a good addition. Congratulations to Claire and the co-drive. I think the fact that it did hit social media and the schools and all different locations, I think it should happen even more often, not just Thanksgiving or Christmas, you know, when everyone does contribute, but other times during the year as well. So, well done. Tammy, thank you for the invitation for the Human Relations Commission. Sounds like a lovely, it always is a lovely event, and a nice collection of awardees also. Jerry, I'm not sure what to say. You started with a quote, I think the same thing, there's two sides to every story. I don't know the other side of that story. I do know my relationship on the planning board, I do know, I have said how knowledgeable you are. There's more to that sentence, so I think maybe after tomorrow's meeting at the Downtown Alliance, we hear both sides and see what direction they're looking to go in. I know how difficult that was, and I know how many years, we've known each other for over 30 years, so I know how difficult that was for you to face that. And Roz and Rosary, I guess the same comments about the, you know, safety. Rosary said, and Roz, you also, that our experience has been that the county has and is, is and has been very receptive to us. I would imagine that the Pedestrian Safety Commission, at your next meeting, come up with some kind of plan. We don't have a plan. Having the police involved would be a way to, to address the concerns that were raised this evening. I apologize to Rosary if I said anything offensive, I didn't mean to. I think what I recall saying was that 741 North Field, we just had a grand opening, and if people did move, it followed in with what Jack was saying, that he tried to get a response, and that people, if they do need help, can call the administration or Jack's office, and they make arrangements for transportation. So I think it's done on a case-by-case basis, and we have talked about the outreach and the communication, allowing more people to know that. So I don't believe that anyone has ever been denied transportation. That is not what was said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Claire, congratulations, so good luck, hope next year's even bigger. People will be depending on you for coats, so congratulations to you and your group. Tammy, congratulations, good luck on your chairmanship and your leadership of the HRC. I feel very confident, as well as my council colleagues, that you'll move it forward with a great bunch of people, to make West Orange the best town it really is, and develop the people that are here that make us a real great community. So, thank you, and I look forward to the event, and thank you for the invitation. Roz and Rosary, you know, the whole thing with pedestrian, the reason why the county is more receptive is because the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. We had our first county meeting a few months back. Our next meeting on the 12th, we'll be planning for our next county meeting to bring ideas to the county of things that we'd like to see done. In response to the issue of pedestrian crossings, there are 42 crossings and areas that we are looking forward to do, that I've already spoken to the county, which we will discuss at the meeting on the 12th, to bring the county in. And we also must realize that the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board is for the whole township of West Orange, our Gregory section, our Northfield section, and Pleasant Valley Way. And that's what we're looking at, at all areas for our safety programs, working with the police department, working with the county. The county's very excited and receptive to the things that we'd like to do. Hopefully, if we get the grant, we'll move forward on the projects for the Pleasant Valley Way intersections and street, you know, and traffic lights. Going back, I mean, I have friends who live in Milburn, and the merchants are very upset with the conditions right now and what they foresee happening on their complete streets. The shoppers are now being forced to park four to five blocks away. So there's no more parking, you know, it's all sidewalk and one lane. So the merchants aren't very happy. So that's why we have to make sure ours is not only good for our merchants, but good for our parking abilities and good for our residents. So, you know, we like to look at other areas, but think about what could happen in West Orange. And I think our organization, I think the members and my board members on the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board are moving us in the right direction, and of course Roz, you've been a major part of that, as well as everybody else. Going on to Jerry with the, you know, I've known Jerry Eben for 35-plus years. Jerry and I first started together on the original Main Street Development Corporation as vice chairman and chairman. Jerry is a very intelligent man. He cares about his township. He, you know, he brings a lot to the table, but what will happen, whatever happens tomorrow at the meeting, and if the public wants to come, they're there to come tomorrow to the Downtown Alliance meeting, right here at Township Hall at 7:30. You know, that's, that's what it is, and, you know, I've known Jerry a long time. I know his heart is there, and it'll have to be judged by the board members of the Downtown Alliance. So, you know, other than that, and Mr. Montague, you've gotten your, hopefully your answer is about Ridgway Avenue. Hopefully, we'll have more information for you soon and what's going on, because we, I'd like to know more of what's going on and what the future holds for that. And, you know, with all the other things in consideration, is that there's just a lot that we need to go on. Getting back to Downtown Alliance, the Downtown Alliance has been very, very successful. We have built partnerships with many organizations, not only the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, not only Unico, not only the National Parks, you know, Department. We've developed, and our board members and our executive director have brought together the right people to move the downtown corridor, the, you know, the scope of expanding the downtown corridor, the image of where there is a connection to people to find out about availability and what we can do for our merchants in the downtown corridor. None of our merchants have complained about what they pay in their CIG and what they get in services in return. We're moving it forward, we have the people, we have the momentum, we have the partnerships that we've made, and these are the things that make the downtown great. And I keep telling people, don't, don't measure us to Milburn or Short Hills and everything else. Our main street was not built as, you know, as a Short Hills. It was built for the residents that lived here, was built for the people who worked here, for the Edison Development, for the Edison Corporation. That's what our downtown was built. Can it be better? Can it look nicer? Yes. And is it beginning to look nicer? Yes, it is, with the development as it moves along. And there's more excitement with the development being completed and moving forward. You just have the interest, the people buying additional properties. It takes a little bit, and basically, we've given it a little bit, and hopefully, at the end of the day, people will look back four or five years from now and say, you know what? We never thought, but hey, there it is. And that's all we can ask for. And I thank you, Council President, my council colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. Who's next? Councilman Kukolejak, yes, please.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to put in a plug for the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration or commemoration. I've been to several of these, they are wonderful. First, they have food, and it's good food. But second, they also have entertainment, and the entertainment is top-notch. And third, you just will not believe some of the stories you hear about the people who are being honored. The stuff that they do, I come away every year, literally, my eyes water at what the people do who are honored to serve their community. So I highly recommend it. It's a day off for a lot of people. Highly recommend, come there, you're out by lunch, and it's really a great event. I want to thank Ms. Vaskavitz, if she's still here, for continuing to keep traffic issues in the town in the forefront. I appreciate the pictures, I hope maybe we should, the town would look at that, some of those problems there, and I really appreciate the pictures, because that really demonstrates what the issue is. And she raised a good point, we've had two traffic fatalities in town this year, and I just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe if, if we could find out if the town or the police department has done anything at those other two areas, the area where around Mississippi Avenue and Lady of Lords, and then also at Liberty, if there's anything that the town has looked at or can do to try to figure out what the problem is and fix it. Maybe at the next council meeting, we could get back on that.
Councilman, I can tell you, they were both accidents that happened, not for any other reason, but people crossing the street against the light, both accidents. That's the best I can, I can say. I'm not going to go into any of the things, both those people obviously lost their lives, so I might not discuss that.
Mr. Eben, I appreciate you coming here tonight. I am, I am literally shocked and very concerned to hear about this. I've never heard of anyone getting kicked off a commission or a committee in this town in the nearly decade that I've been paying attention. I just, you have not only contributed to this community for four decades, as you said, in a brighter role, but you are among the most distinguished professionals in a town of many accomplished people. As you pointed out, you've been president, a state affiliate of the American Institute of Architects, and as a former director on the National Board. And if you know where to look, you can see Mr. Eben's work here in town and in many, many communities throughout Essex County and New Jersey. This guy's done a lot and knows a lot. I know that he speaks his mind, and as someone who gets accused of speaking his mind and turning off people, I understand where that might occasionally happen, especially on your issue of enforcing our zoning and our property maintenance ordinances and regulations. But there's no doubt in my mind that you have only the best interests of the town at heart in making this a better place to live. You're an architect and a professional planner, which is just what I think the Alliance needs. We should be welcoming- We should be welcoming volunteers, especially those with professional expertise, and certainly not preventing them from contributing. I can't imagine what you could have said or done to justify this, and I hope this dismissal doesn't take place. And I would certainly like to hear more about this at the next council meeting. Ms. Morelli, thanks again for your comments, again, keeping senior transportation on the forefront. I'm looking forward to hearing back on how the county is fixing this issue, and maybe there might be a best practice here that we could use here in town to try to figure out this issue, because you've been coming here for a long time, asking me about this. Really, we'd really like to get some closure on this, get this process moving better. That's all, Council President.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Yeah, and I just want to go back to those pictures. There's some tripping hazards in there that I guess, is it code enforcement that can...
Yeah, it's code enforcement. Actually, one section in the street, it's, part of the sidewalk is cracked up with some of the asphalt. Shall I have somebody go up there and take a look at that?
Yeah. And I'm sure that we're trying to keep up on top of the property ma, I'm sorry, the maintenance, yeah, by that bus depot, the bus stop there. There's always like a lot of garbage laying around. Claire, thank you for your work on behalf of the community. 365 coats. We went up like 100 coats over last year, right? Based on those numbers. So, yeah, you know what? Early on, I talked about benevolence during the holidays, and that's a perfect example. Thank you for doing that. Let me see, the last issue is Rosary Morelli talked about indiscretions. I don't know what she's referring to, but, you know, God teaches us to love everyone, even those that cast stones. We're not perfect, we're all children of God. But what I can tell you is, you know, I've had my issue. I had an issue. I had a DUI stop, and it made me a better person, and I'm a better person now for it. But, you know, you're entitled to your own opinion. I did apologize back then, I think it's a matter of respect. So if that's what you're referring to, it was, we apologized in 2012, if you look back at the record. But again, as I told you, in, you know, I was looking at this flyer, Martin Luther King, it says, says to create an environment of unconditional love. So, you know, God bless. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Oh, oh, may she.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that you said...
That's okay. I am tired, though. I should have made that.
What a move. We have 27 resolutions.
That's right, we have the resolutions. Ms. Monague, thank you for coming down. As you heard this evening, there is a process, and we all look forward to the results of that process. But thank you, thank you for coming and sharing with us. Tammy Williams, I'm sure it's going to be a nice event, and I like to ditto my colleagues' remarks about the prior events. It's a really lovely ceremony, and, you know, in years past, and even this year, just the awardees, very thoughtful, take a lot of time picking the awardees, and they're always, you know, they deserve the award. So you do a nice job, so looking forward to that. And Claire, the kids must have been really excited, because I know they probably were, you know, they always get excited to beat their record from last year, so next year, I'm sure they'll be on the move early. Ms. Morelli and Roz. First, Ms. Morelli. I'm glad the county was able to address the transportation issues. This week, and Roz, I want to thank you, because you had mentioned Partners with Health. Denise Rodriguez is working with Partners with Health. She's filing a grant this week with them, so we could hopefully be awarded the monies to start a survey for senior services, a comprehensive study, where if we are awarded the money, we're early in the spring, it can take a month or two to find out if we get the grant, but if we do, we'll be able to have Montclair State come in and facilitate this study. And hopefully, a lot of these issues that have been going on and on, and we've been going around and around with, will be able to be accomplished. Mr. Sarris, I know, is always there, you know, taking phone calls for folks with the transportation issues. And again, I think we just need to move forward. I think everybody's looking to work on this and to communicate better. I'd like for us, Mr. Sarris, to look at the, how we're doing with the complaint reporting, like on the website, you know, where they have to, the first page of the website where you could, you could utilize that service, where the complaints, is it, you know, how efficient is it? Is it working? And then maybe the PR commission, we could work with that to get the word out, you could report it. Because Roz, I'm glad, I appreciate you coming down with the pictures, but we shouldn't have that here. It should be as soon as any resident, and I appreciate you coming down, but any resident sees something, say something, report it. And so we need to get, you know, educate our residents, so we could get these items reported, and then there has to be follow-up to get them done, because they do look like... Yeah, so if you could...
Counselman, just to that end...
Sure.
In 2017, we'll be rolling out, hopefully during the first quarter, rolling out an app where residents will be able to take pictures of things and send them to us.
Oh, wow.
And get right into our system, so that, we hope to roll that out in the first quarter.
That could be very good and very bad.
And very bad. We're using the system internally now, and, you know, we're running through it, and like I said, we hope to be in a position to actually get that out there.
Has it working elsewhere?
Good, good.
Well, no, what's good about it, you actually could see it, so if somebody calls, you could understand what they're talking about.
You can't walk away from it.
Yeah.
You know, when you have it, you have it, and you know it, and if we deal with it, we deal, the process is working now, we deal with complaints. Now we're entering them in by hand when we get them, and then we have, you know, we can look and see when we got a complaint, how long it's been out there.
Great. Very good. Okay, good. I'm glad to hear. And my last comment, Jerry Eben. Got to know you this year. I think very knowledgeable. I appreciate many of our chats that we have. You educated me on many issue. And I hope tomorrow night, you could work out your issues with your, with the Downtown Alliance. You do have a very vast experience, and that is needed, and we always do appreciate our residents, but I also know, you know, there's tough, and sometimes, you know, tough has to be looked at also, and everybody has to learn, you know, everybody has to communicate. So I just hope all of yous could work out and resolve the issue. I look forward to 2017, that a lot of us could work out our issues, because there's a lot of great things happening in this township. There's issues with downtown, but, you know, the Alliance has been doing an awesome job trying to get them resolved, and maybe sometimes, instead of being critical, we need to actually, you know, roll up our sleeves and jump in, which I know many of you do that come here, so this isn't, you know, for folks that are here. A lot of you come here, a lot, week after week, to remind us what we need to do. But I'm looking forward to 2017. I think there's going to be a lot of great things happening in West Orange, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. Before I close, there was a proposed ordinance. Tammy, has this been filed?
Yes, it is now.
Okay.
So this is preliminary, sent to you all, and then they discuss it on the...
And I apologize for the back and forth, but yeah, so we'll make sure that the administration gets a copy of this.
We got a copy.
Oh, you got a copy.
It's very limited to legal, and I think we will very forward it as a counsel to the clerk for the next meeting.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Yes. We're going to review the agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public minutes of December 6, 2016.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Mayor Preece requesting the advice and consent of the council for the reappointment of Sherry Purvis to the West Orange Public Library Board effective January 1, 2017, and continuing through December 31, 2020.
Consent.
Consent.
Absolutely, you've done a really good job.
Yeah.
Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
And resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I just have a question. Yeah, I just wanted, I was just curious with the, with letter G, with the, I mean, it's self-explanatory, the Vietnam Memorial Wall, which seems like a nice, a nice idea, just, is the recreation department like in charge of that, or how are they going to work that?
It's being handled by the administration.
Oh, by the administration, okay.
I think it's worth clarifying for people who don't see the agenda, what we're talking about.
I could read the, what it is.
Oh, good, thanks. Yeah, it's a really neat idea.
Okay. 269-16 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Vietnam and all veterans of Brevard, Inc., Melbourne, Florida, for the use of the memorial wall replica at a cost of $7,248. This event will display a three-fifths replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall set up at the West Orange High School to honor veterans of the Vietnam War and educate the public regarding the Vietnam War. This event will take place during the 4th of July weekend of 2017.
Do we know where they're setting it up on the property?
The answer is, I'm sure it is. I don't personally know.
Yeah.
I do want to commend the administration for, I don't know, to change the topic, on 279-16, this is the CDBG priority list. I like it.
Yeah.
You know, we're spending money in an older part of the municipality, repaving, street improvements, that's Washington Street, and also ADA access at the Jenny Dunkle Pool, mental health services, and at-risk youth programs. Thank you very much. Those are great, great programs. It's a worthwhile investment.
If I could, Counsel, if you could follow up on this. I wanted to just ask a question about this, because if you look at the chart, it either coincidentally or not, lists the six objects of the grants, of the targets, from the smallest amount that's requested to the largest amount. I just want to be sure that that's what the administration is suggesting as a prioritization, starting at one and moving up, because I just looked at the numbers, and the numbers go, the first target is $15,000, the last one is $200,000, and it goes up each time.
Yeah, they're all in order, yeah.
So, Councilman, your question is whether or not, is it in, is it, is it in some form order, or is it in priority order, eh?
Right, right.
Do we know the answer?
Well, this looks like amount order.
I think, as counsel, where most of these are, you know, to the extent that there is funds available, will go where they have historically gone, and perhaps if there are no additions to there, depending on how much money there is, they'll spread that out.
Well, the council was always asked at one time to put these in...
To prioritize.
Yes.
To what our priority is. Are we going to be able to do that?
Well, that's, this is the priority list, you know, again, that's a recommendation to CDBG or to the county as to where the funds are going to go. There's no guarantee that they're going to follow that recommendation. So if you want to reorder these, you certainly have the right to do that.
Okay.
I don't really think it's necessary to reorder, because I really don't, because you know that we don't get the full amount anyway, and then it would be up to our discretion when the money comes in to see where it's going to go.
Exactly.
So I don't, I don't really see the need to prioritize.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I mean, that's...
You could just read them, Council President.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, so what we're talking about is community development block grants. The first one was Main Street Counseling Center at $15,000. The Bethany Church for Champions Outreach for At-Risk Youth at $75,000. Mead Street, Street Improvements at $119,000. The Jenny Dunkle Municipal Pool, ADA and Barrier-Free Access Improvements, $156,000. Columbia Street, Street Improvements, Washington Street to the Bend, $180,000, and Watchung Avenue Street Improvements from Washington Street to the Wiguan Brook at $200,000. So it is a total of $745,000. We've never seen that kind of money, so we'll just use it to the best of our discretion.
Okay.
So, are there any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Nope.
Yes.
If I could, I have just a request of, Mr. Gross, there are a number of insurance and healthcare-related resolutions, and I just wondered if we could get just a little bit of merit on each one of them, just basically because they make such a large impact on our, on our budget, that maybe we could just talk a little bit about how the numbers are changing and what are the trends, and that's what...
Yeah, the long and short of it is the dental rates are staying, going to stay the same, I'm sorry, for two years, which is the first time we've been able to get that. The prescription rates have a significant increase, but not as high as it has in previous years in terms of going up. And we're looking at the possibility with the resolutions approved, if it's approved tonight, which is our excess carrier approval, we may see a slight downtick in the rates for medical. So...
Is it our loss ratio going down? Has our loss ratio gone down?
It's a combination of experience, and our experience is starting to level out. You know, we're a new health insurance fund, you know, and now that we've gone through three years, part of it is, we've learned what our highs and lows are better, and from a budgeting point of view, we're able to, and, you know, the actuaries now have real numbers to deal with, as opposed to projections from other towns and things of that nature. So we have more data, so we think that, you know, we definitely leveled off this year. There's no question about that.
And the experience between retirees and current employees, how's that marketing out? How is that?
It's as anticipated. I mean, we do monitor and keep them separate, we're, obviously, they're rated separately.
Okay, off, off the top.
It's really difficult to say, because, you know, for instance, our seniors, after they become Medicare age, our costs go way down because Medicare kicks in. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they're healthier, it doesn't necessarily mean that their claims are going down. It's just our portion of the claims go down.
Correct.
So, I mean, so it's really hard to answer the question right here without actually looking at the total claims picture and who's paying for the total claims, which I don't have to.
No, I understand, but some of our retirees are nowhere near. I mean, they're 10 years maybe away from Medicare.
Yeah, vast majority of them are over Medicare age.
It'd be good to see that, if you had the time and lay, it'd be good to see that percentages and how it lays out across the board.
I know what our claims are, but again, that's only our portion of the claims.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. On the prescription costs, what you're saying is that they're going up a significant amount, but not as much as they have in the last couple of years. So I just eyeballed, it looks like about, they're going up about $500,000?
Yeah, probably. I mean, that's the total amount, not all of that will be within budget, because some of it is for, you know, outside people that pay their own, et cetera, et cetera.
Is there anything you can discern as to why these costs keep going up at such rate?
It's the one segment of the medical market that continues to climb. Drug prices just continue to get larger and higher and higher and higher.
It's not that we're using more of them, or that...
No, 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 it's not that.
Is there anything you can do to modify?
Well, the truth of the matter is, is that the medical community looks forward to using more and more medications to keep people out of hospitals, to keep them healthy. So I don't think it's a trend that you can look to see going downward, generally speaking. You know, the trend of making people healthy is because the medications are working and extending, helping to extend lives. So I think the long-term trend is always going to be upward utilization. You know, costs, that's, that becomes an issue that's bigger than all of us right here, certainly it's a nationwide issue.
I just want to make sure you're looking at it and looking for all angles. Just a quick question, I think, about Resolution 272-16. We self-insure, and so we have insurance in case our claims just go through the roof, not go through the roof, but a lot more than we underwriting we expect.
Correct.
So we actually had claims against this policy this year, because we've got some very sick people. But it looked like, if I read this correctly, it looked like even though we're having claims this year, that the cost for the coverage next year is actually going down slightly?
Yes, we negotiated... Yes, we, we negotiated a decrease this year for the, for the, for the cost of the reinsurance. So, that's one of the reasons that we think we'll be able to have a down, downturn in rate.
Do you anticipate in 2017, you said things are leveling, leveling off?
Definitely leveled off for 16, and that's showing in our projections for 17 as well, so.
Let's just be clear, if something catastrophic happens in 17, that would hurt back up again.
Well, it looks like from the little bit of notes we had in here, we've had multiple catastrophic illnesses.
Yes. And that, and to be honest with you, I don't think it's necessarily unusual, and that's why you have this coverage. This covers, covers us for any employee that uses, during the, during the claim period, any more than, more than $200,000. Now, we have a few, a few employees that have reached that, and we have a number of employees that are, you know, up, up above 50%, who may reach that even by the end of the year. Because it's, the insurance is based on, not when the claims are made, but when they, when they're incurred. So, this, this, you know, we're, the, the current carrier coverage policy actually will bleed into next year.
Just one more thing, I'd like to pull 273-16. It's authorizing an agreement with Fairview Insurance Agency Associates for the provision of risk management consulting consultation services. That's another thing I wanted to call.
Madam Clerk?
Close 273-16?
Yes, please.
Is there anyone else that's pulling anything?
Nope.
Okay, is there a mo, oh, did you, okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
En favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Kukoviac, you pulled 273-16, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Fairview Insurance Agency Associates for the provision of risk management consult, consultation services.
Thank you. This is just to continue employing the Fairview Insurance Agency, which we've insured since the term, since before the turn of the century. I have been advocating that we need to change the way we treat our insurance advice, to go to a different model, which is to pay by the hour, or pay by the duty or task, and not pay as a percentage of the cost of the coverage. And I raise this every year, and I'm certainly open to discussing this with, with the council, but I just don't want to go on record as approving this, because I just don't think it's smart. I think we can save a lot of money if we change the way we process insurance. I just, I'm not looking for an argument, I just don't want to vote for this.
All, all I want to mention on that is that the councilwoman's right, you, there are two, two different ways of doing it. You can do it by percentage or premium, or you can do it by a flat fee. For, for instance, for our health benefits, we actually use a flat fee for that. And, and, and in, and in, in inclining economy, that's a really good thing, because then you can control the fee. The fee doesn't necessarily have to go up as the cost of the, the care goes up. With, with, with our joint insurance fund, it's been a percentage, that, that is the formula that the fund itself uses for it. And we've seen, and now this will be our second year in a row, where we had, last year we had a slight decline, I believe, and this year we had a significant decline. And since it's at the same percentage rates, we're actually seeing, the, the broker will actually make less money this year as they did in the previous year. So, it can cut both ways, this particular period of time, it's cutting our way, in the future, it might not. When you, when you hit to a flat fee, generally, you know, they'll, they'll stay stable with, with cost fluctuations. So, it's certainly a philosophical question. Right now, we're benefiting from it. In the future, we, you know, in the past, we may not have, and in the future, we, we may, but right now, we are.
And that's, and that's certainly true, but it's also, we're at the 7% commission, which is the top rate that the JIF allows to charge, so we're still paying premium on a percentage basis. I just think we should go to competitive bidding and bid it out by tax. We've seen a lot of savings around the, around the state from municipalities and school boards that have done that.
Thank you, Councilman, and a point well taken. In the future, should a flat fee be the, the best economically feasible, or the most economically feasible way? We should consider that if the premium goes up, then our, it hurts us. Premiums goes down, it's not as, as big of a head, okay? So, we'll make sure the administration considers it.
John, it sounds like you consider, you do consider that in...
It, it is a consideration, you know, again, the, the model in this JIF is it uses a percentage premium, that's their model. So, I mean, it's not, you know, not something that, that we go out and, and control, because we, frankly, we don't. We get to select, and that, that's the basis by which we reward. But like I said, it's, I certainly appreciate the tug and the pull both ways on that. We could, we could have a long discussion, but I don't think it's necessary.
Right.
Very good, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments, or do I hear a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to vote on any of?
Is there a motion to adopt 273-16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Next item is the ordinance on second and final reading, 2498-16, and ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section 50.3 of the Revised General Ordinances, Permit Parking in Hazel Avenue Parking Lot. This ordinance is revising the township's municipal parking code to address a change in the parking rules for the municipal lot on Hazel Avenue. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading? So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address the council on the ordinance 2498-16? Seeing none, any of my colleagues? I know we had a little bit of a discussion last time. Does anyone want to add any commentary?
No, just as a reminder, we're actually just changing the hours of the, of the impact of the parking lot.
Parking ticket.
In the parking lot at the bottom of Hazel Avenue here. I just had a concern that I thought maybe it might be used for the theater down there, but it doesn't look like the theater thinks it's that important to them, so.
Well, thank you for checking out.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna make a comment, that, it was the last weekend I went down there to, to go to the holiday shop from the West Orange Arts Council, because that was my concern about parking, and there was plenty of spots, even that lot was, you know, empty as well, half-empty, so. It was about 3:00 in the afternoon, so.
Terrific.
So, I'm good.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Is there, is there a motion to adopt 2498-16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance on first reading, 2499-16, and ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan for an area in need of redevelopment consisting of Block 9, Lots 11, 1, 2, 3, 32, 36, and Block 7, Lot 22, in accordance with NJSA 48:12A-1. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading? So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Yeah, I, do you want to talk about the change?
I mentioned the lots before, so we're talking about redeveloping this area. This was first presented to the planning board back in 2005, and this is a brownfield, so this does require quite a bit of remediation, which we have put resolutions forth for that. The planning board did unanimously approve the redevelopment plan. It would be mixed-use residential and commercial properties. Some existing zones would remain. I read off the names of the properties that are in the, this zone, 25 Mitchell, 29, 27 Mitchell, 810 Central Avenue, 18 Central Avenue, and 4 Tompkins Street. Again, you have the Highland Avenue Station there, and we already have an approved plan. Harvard Press Building, that was approved a few years back also for rental units, so that's ready to go. Orange is doing the same, you know, it's right there on our border, and we have our eyes on the prize with Highland Avenue Station, that, you know, if you build it, we were told by New Jersey Transit, that if you build it, they would refurbish the train station, which would be excellent for residents and commercial and employees in the area, so.
And the Harvard Press Building is no longer there, it's a big pile of waste.
It's ready to go, right, yep, so that was an approved plan.
Progress.
Just a, just a quick question, Councilwoman, because you probably know this. When the, when the planning board approved this, they put a number of conditions on it.
Okay, let's see.
My question is, do we officially review the report? Or do we also take into consideration the conditions that the planning board put on it, because...
That's interesting, because, you know, really, you would think it would be the recommendation from the planning board would come first, right?
Yeah.
Showing the plan, showing the revisions.
Can I ask you a question? So, the conditions that you mentioned, are they like a condition for approval by the planning board?
Yes, that's normally what they do, the planning board when they approve something.
Okay, so that's what we are approving, what the planning board approved.
With the conditions.
Okay, so the conditions have actually been, become part of?
Yes.
Yes, that's what we have.
Yeah.
So, when we look at it, we have to look at both the plan that was proposed, as well as the conditions.
Yes.
Correct.
Let's see, um...
Do you have a list of the conditions, just for...
It just said that, you know, it definitely was consistent with the master plan, it was, um... Let me read that. This was the objective, was to encourage economic development and redevelopment that is compatible with the suburban character of our township, with particular sensitivity to the existing residential neighborhoods. As commercial industrial facilities become obsolete and outdated, which is what we're looking at, efforts should be made to rehabilitate and revitalize these areas prior to or in lieu of the redevelopment of existing open space. Let's see, I'm sorry, I don't have the conditions here. Just that it was consistent, some was just in, in the verbiage of it, unless I have more notes.
And no conditions here. Anything in particular that the script was?
I was at the meeting, if you recall, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you must have it, yes.
I was locked out of the building.
Locking out the thing on the window, yes.
You were listening through the window?
Yes, and I apologize for interrupting, but some of the, some of the planning board members, I think maybe two of them, were not too happy about allowing a warehouse use there. And of course, the one property owner who did not, who's now within the redevelopment area, who doesn't want to be in the redevelopment area, wants to operate his property as a warehouse. So, I just wanted to make sure when we start considering this, the condition, yeah, the condition allows the use of a warehouse, but I just...
That was not changed, right.
Right.
There were concerns, but no one wanted to exclude, there are no applications pending, so now we do have a plan. We don't really want to exclude anyone from submitting an application. And again, last year, the year before, the planning board came up with design standards. So, when you talk about a warehouse, you know, it's, we can design a warehouse with the design standards that we have, that we have in place. So, if, if that's the case. The concern that you mentioned about this warehouse was that it was supposed to be for food. And again, that can't happen until all of that remediation happens. So, that was the issue, that was one of the issues that was raised. But warehouse is still in this zone. Shared parking, yeah, there was shared parking. Still my notes here, you would think I'd have it, thank you, sorry.
Any, any other points of discussion? Madam Clerk, we're gonna move on to next ordinance?
Ordinance 2500-16, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing employee status as a township employee and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
No.
We got the book left on?
Nope.
Next is pending matters, new matters, or council discussion of any kind.
I think we covered them all, at least the ones that I had.
I do have one question, Council President.
Yes.
All I did, this came up with zoning issues before, and I was looking for the email. We did receive an email from a resident about commercial vehicles being parked on Seward Place. I don't know if you've seen that, Seward Street. It's not on our agenda, but it was an email, and I was hoping that... Well, it was a resident who happens to be an employee of the school board, but she's been a resident for 30 years.
Right.
Right.
Well, what they're upset about is that they've been using that lot to park their cars while they work at Edison High School.
Okay.
Now, there's people in the neighborhood parking there because it's a protected municipal lot, so we're trying to work something out.
That's from Mrs. Buchezin.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Sandy.
There were commercial vehicles parked there also, though I guess that's...
Well, there were people who lived in the neighborhood.
With the commercials, okay. Well, that we could address.
Thank you.
Was that by Edison, by Colgate, on the Colgate side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some commercial vehicles parking by the school, right?
And you got the information I got, I sent you about that, at the Woodlands, okay, thank you.
We're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, will recess?
Yes, I need a motion to recess until January 3, 2017.
Second.
Why not the first?
Oh, I make a motion to recess until January, second.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion is carried.
Say it all together?
Thank you, West Orange, and, hey, can we say what we practiced?
There you go. Ready? One, two, three.
Two, three. Happy holidays and a happy new year for the West Orange Township Council.
Good night, West Orange.